Okay. Okay. Yeah, that would do it. That would do it. Thank you.
I have to call the City Council Committee Meeting to order for Monday, December 19th, 2022. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, the meeting is in order. Hello? The meeting's in order. Thank you. The first committee is Finance.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The fourth item is the 2023 New York State Stop DWI Plan Grant Assistant Group.
Good evening. Good evening. Requesting that we accept the 2023 New York State Stop DWI Grant. It's $22,000. There is no matching funds involved. We use this for staffing to stop DWIs.
Any question? Go ahead, please.
So with the Police Department, I see that it's coming through the county to the Police Department?
Yes, ma'am.
Will the county be involved at all in doing the actual DWI itself?
In the high, sorry, the high enforcement of the H2, than they are, yes. So the regular funds are just for Schenectady EPD. And the high enforcement, we work with other agencies, so it may be Schenectady, it may be Niskiuna. That is for the
The high visibility.
The high visibility, the $6,000, that's in conjunction with the other agencies, but then all that money comes to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Move it.
All in favor? Hi, thank you. The next item is just a reminder, the application for Restoring New York Around Seven Grant. Reminder, the public hearing is scheduled for the 27th of this month. The next item is the Home Call for Public Hearing and Home Consortium Allocation Plans. This plan is the
Good evening, everyone. So this request is in relation to the Home ARPA Consortium, which consists of the City of Schenectady and Troy and also the town of Collin. Was allocated $3,832,771 million through the Home ARPA program. And this is administered through HUD, so it's separate from our other ARPA allocations. We've had to go through a pretty extensive planning process to come up with the allocation plan that we've included the summary of, and the whole plan is located in the spaces that are noted. This allocation plan isn't funding to direct organizations, it's just looking at the uses for the funding, so the eligible activities that the funding can be used for. So that includes affordable housing development, non-congregative shelters, supportive services, and the tenant-based rental assistance. So those are the four different categories that we looked at, how to break up the funding in terms of its uses. Once we submit this allocation plan to HUD, we will then, there will then be an RFP process for service providers and organizations to apply for that funding. So we are looking to call for a public hearing that would be held on Tuesday, December 27th, at 7:00 PM during the regularly scheduled council meeting. And this is just for purposes of hearing comments on the plan. The public comment period is open through January 6th.
Questions? Mr. Colton, may I have a question? All in favor? The next item is update regarding the ARPA allocation.
Thank you. So at our last committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, we had this on the agenda to ask for an update, to see where we were with the ARPA applications. We heard from organizations who were expecting letters and when they were going to get their funding. So I know that there was some action taking place, had been has taken place, so at this point in time, I was wondering where we are with that in terms of the timeline, in terms of the contracts, and, you know, when people can kind of expect to see some movement on their applications, on their awards. So.
I indicated before, I'd sent out the letters to roughly 20 groups for the background information. There are some contingencies in those, with the exception of the YW and SAFE Inc. I think those contracts are pretty much ready to
Yeah, I think Mr. Marnie's been working in the Law Department on putting the contracts together. Obviously, one of the letters included, I think, financial documentation, another documentation that had to come in. I believe that was going to go through the Development Department. I don't know exactly where that stands in terms of receiving documentation from those organizations. I anticipate that the contracts will go out before the end of the week this week, you know, once it's reviewed, obviously, by the Development Department. Obviously, we spoke about the contingencies, you know, some of the contracts, or excuse me, some of the allocations required a match contingency be met before we entered the contracts. So I believe when the letters were sent out from the mayor's office, they included the resolutions so that those organizations would see what the council authorized or didn't authorize at that time. So obviously, there were allocations for all, but not authorizing contracts just yet for many.
So the ones that didn't have contingencies are the ones that the contracts would be
Correct. So I believe that's the YWCA. I believe there was no contingency for, I mean, I think the resolution came around at the beginning of the meeting today, I believe there's no contingency for Green Market. I think there was work that may have already been done by the Prosters that the council authorized funding for. So we'd have to check, obviously. One of the things we'd have to do on that end is verify that that work had been done. And, you know, obviously, if the work has already been done, we'll see receipts and see what work actually, you know, what they spent in order to reimburse them for that funding. And I believe there was some other, I think, as the mayor said, SAFE Inc. And I, you know, I don't want to be quoted. I believe there were at least two other organizations, maybe not a misresolution from August 22nd, but there was a resolution from September 12th where I think there were certain organizations that didn't have any contingencies.
Thank you. Ms. Deah, did you have anything to add to that? Thank you. And we'll just, we'll keep bringing this forward so we can keep track and people can hear where things are at. Thank you, Mr. Muver.
There were no contingencies. On the other resolution, I don't believe there were contingencies at all, for example, the Green Market.
Well, thank you. Do you want us back, because this was a heldover from last two weeks?
Yes, to bring it back in two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yes, so we can just stay updated.
Okay. The next item is a discussion regarding the Aquatic Center and allocation, upper allocation, and also to look at the fourth set of allocation that we did. When the resolution was passed, we discussed verbally at the table here in regards to timeline, but it never ended under resolution. So we want to discuss in terms of, on the second set of allocation, we had given them 12 months, but this first allocation, there is no timeline. So we just want to address it, should we attach a timeline to the fourth set of allocation, like what we had done to the second set of allocation? So I want to discuss this on the table in terms of, one set doesn't have a timeline, the other set has a timeline. I think that we should put a form timeline with regards to these allocations also. I'm discussing with Mr. Colton and Ms. Deah, they think that we should also, if there are any mistakes.
Certainly, it's up, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Certainly, it's up to the council in terms of what it would like to do, in terms of, you know, setting the deadline, what contingencies have to be met. It did in the September 12th resolution for many of the organizations that had to meet financial goals, it did not do it, as Mr. Muver said, in the August 22nd resolution. So certainly, it's completely up to the council on how to handle that.
So I was thinking about, since we passed this in August, we should apply a 12 months, the same as we did for the second set. I don't know, I mean, so go ahead, please.
So that would be for any of these, not just the aquatic, I know this says the Aquatic Center, but it would be any of the ones that we
We were looking at the Aquatic Center and then realized that all didn't have a timeline.
I think for us to be consistent, we should apply a timeline. In addition to that, we have, we are, we have given, we're given a timeline on how we can spend this money. So there's the allocation timeline, there's a timeline to spend. So if we leave it open-ended, then, you know, that may put us in a position that even though we allocate, if they don't match, get all their matching, and they're not there, what do we do in that case? So I would say that we would need to do that.
Go ahead, please. And, you know, obviously, the resolution that was passed out, the first resolution from August 22nd, all it was, was, and we discussed it, obviously, at that meeting, and, you know, I remember, obviously, asking exactly what you wanted to do as a council, and it was just allocating the funds for that particular purpose, but not authorizing the contract. Whereas, the other resolution from September, the council, you know, allocated the funds for the particular project and also authorized the mayor to enter into those agreements. But for those agreements where the organization had to have, or had to meet a contingency before they could enter into the contract, they had to meet that contingency.
Right.
So this, these would still have to come back to the council, because there hasn't been any authorization to have the mayor enter into these contracts.
But we still, if they have to raise other money, there still needs to be some timeline in place for them to do that, because if they don't, then we've left it open-ended and conceivably could be to the end of the time that we have to spend money, which won't work. So we have to figure out some type of timeline in order, I believe, in order to do that.
Yeah, we did allocate, actually, 12 months on the second set of allocation. So I'm thinking about, we do the same for this one here, do an amendment to include the timeline, be 12 months from when we passed it. I'm just suggesting that.
But Mr. Colton is saying that they, we haven't entered, the timelines were given to those that were, a contract was assigned with, and this doesn't have one. Is that?
What I indicated was, the resolutions are obviously different in that this one, this one is only, you know, you allocated funds for particular projects. The other one, from September, you both allocated and authorized the mayor, but set those contingencies for those contracts where, you know, they had to raise additional funding. Those organizations had to raise additional funding. Certainly, the council can put a one-year contingency in, you know, for these allocations so that you can let those organizations know that this isn't, you know, you're not, you're not going to go a year and a half down the road, you're not going to go two and a half years down the road. You're going to, you know, the city council can certainly say, we're going to hold this allocation here for a year. And in that year, you have to come back and show us that you have the funding in place to move ahead with the project. That's certainly the prerogative, that can be the prerogative of the council.
And that's what I'm leading towards, because if it's, one set is treated differently from the second set, it's not fair. Go ahead, please.
Well, I agree with that. I think that we probably need to have, you know, a spreadsheet or something that actually showed all of the allocations, all of the decisions that we made, and, you know, say, this one had this contingency, this one had that contingency, this one had no contingency, de-sued, de-sued it, unless everybody has a complete memory of every single project and what we said about each of the various projects. I would suggest that we need to see that, but I think, I support making the timeline consistent across all of the projects that we agreed on. Now, would we have to go back and re-vote on these, since we didn't do that? The first resolution, the one that was from August, since we didn't put that language
You don't, you don't, you would have to vote if you're going to be resolving to put a contingency in that doesn't currently exist within the resolution.
Okay.
Yes. So the resolution, the second resolution was one year, that took you, if you want to be consistent, that took you to September 12th of 2023.
Any thoughts? How we move forward?
Well, Ms. Patrick is asking for, for
Well, no, I mean, if the
A spreadsheet, just to be clear on what we're asking.
I'm okay saying that we want to just stretch, we want to make sure that all of the allocations are consistent with one another. I'm just saying that it's, there's several that have these kinds of contingencies around the money. And that's not
It's not clear.
It's not in here. I mean, I can go back to all of my notes and kind of scratch it out one by one, but just wanted to make that clear, that it wasn't just the Aquatic Center.
Oh, no. There's several.
We were thinking about the reason why, because we had mentioned verbally here that we're going to give the Aquatic Center 21st of December this year. And I was looking to bring it to the table to give them an extension, but then realized speaking to Mr. Colton and Ms. Deah, that there is other results. So that's why I brought it up.
For the sake of clarification, if I may, so the council did authorize contracts for this resolution for Green Market, for SAFE Incorporated, for the Seat Center, for the Little League, and for the Duryday Community Foundation, which means they didn't authorize, well, we know the city projects, we would have to put that out to bid in any event, but Mayor Quan Prague had a contingency, had to meet funding requirements. Capital Region Aquatic Center needed to meet funding requirements. The Schenectady Foundation, Sycamore and City Schenectady needed to meet funding considerations, or contingencies, rather. So that would cover, you know, for the purpose of this resolution, those organizations that had funding contingencies.
There's like four of them, what contingencies, second page.
Correct. Everything on that back page, but for the City of Schenectady, Duryday Foundation.
Oh, is that a name? I just want to also point out that that one with, I don't remember the financial contingency on the Schenectady Foundation, Sycamore, Suniti Schenectady, but that also does include concern for the hungry. So I just wanted to clarify that, because that was part of that package also. It's in the third column, if you look in the language of the third column, it said it includes concern for the hungry, so I just wanted to make sure that that was, they would be getting their contract as well. But I don't remember what the financial contingency was there.
The Thank you. Though the first, the contract hasn't even been authorized by the city council, so you'd still have to come back, right? It was only the allocation for a particular purpose. So the council hasn't authorized a contract yet with any of those organizations.
Right.
And certainly, I'd have to go back, I don't have the documents related to, you know, the financial contingencies for that project. That would be something that would have been in the packets, you know, I think the council's considering everything to begin with.
Right.
So I'm suggesting that we go ahead and, to get the document that Ms. Patrick's asking for, and also for those, if we haven't authorized a contract, and I don't, and I have to agree with Ms. Patrick, I don't remember there being a contingency for the, for the food access and all the different agencies, so if we could just have that information. I'm sorry, Ms. Patrick, Ms. Deah?
Yeah, please.
I think for that, when it was more of a question of how the funding was going to be distributed, because the request was more than what the million dollars, I think, that was allocated was. So I think that's all that was, was just making sure everybody was on the same page about how the funding was going to get broken up.
Okay.
So no contingency?
Yeah, that makes sense, because it was presented to us as a bulk number, when in fact, there were four different agencies, organizations, I should say, asking for four different amounts of money. So that, you're, I absolutely remember now, because it was $600,000 for Schenectady Foundation, it was X for the others, X, you know, Y, Z. And how would that have played out, we did not discuss, so. And that, I think, led to some confusion on the agencies parts as well. I got some calls about that afterwards. Thank you.
How can we move forward in terms of an amendment or a resolution? So fixed 12 months, starting from August 22nd?
You want to go 12 months from August, or, just from my clarification, this is up to the council, obviously, going from the date of this resolution, or being consistent with the second resolution and giving them until September 12th, 2023, right? So that, I think that's one question that I would have. And then I would suggest that, you know, it's not necessarily creating a new, it's not necessarily a mending resolution, it's referring back to this old resolution, whereas the city council passed this previous resolution, I can refer to this, and say, related to that resolution, the city council is going to create, if you're going to do this, a deadline in which the contingencies have to be met, and what those contingencies are.
Is there any objection, I'm going to talk, instead of August, September? I'm good with September, to be consistent.
I'm fine with it, because we actually haven't done anything, and no one's got anything yet, so we're eating into the time already, so I'm fine with that.
All right. You have a question? Oh, no. All right, so I will need a motion to-
Do we know what those contingencies are?
No.
No.
I think we should, I think, Mr. Mudd, we should get the contingency, get all of that information first.
You want to hold this for two weeks, and ask, get the stuff more in more detail? Because it was more than one item that we wanted to, and today we got a wing of all these.
Yeah, you can't vote on this.
Yeah, no, we can't vote on this one. So let's follow up with the detail of all the contingency items, for first allocation, second allocation, and then we move to amend the timeline for the fourth set. So we can do that in two weeks' time. Yeah, I'm fine with that, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other items before finance?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. On a favor, hi, thank you.
I'd like to call to order city development and planning, and I am going to move the agenda around a little bit, so we're going to ask for item number five to come first, discussion and recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding 308 State Street. So Ms. Christian, would you like to join us here?
Sure. Do I have to stand here?
Yes, you have to stand here. Excuse me, Mr. Brown, do you want to do that, or he can come and do it, it's up to you. It's up to you.
Somebody. Yeah, sure. Good evening, my name is Gloria Fishton, I'm the chairperson of Schenectady Heritage Foundation, which is an advocacy group for historic preservation in Schenectady County. So we appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation to the city government. In order to try to get overlay historic zoning for the group of parcels that are now gathered under the address of 308 State Street. Originally, of course, they each have separate addresses, but the current owner has consolidated them into one parcel known as 308, so just want to clarify that. That's what we're saying, 308, we're really talking about four different buildings. So I guess we can go to our next slide. This is a very short PowerPoint, just to explain our viewpoint. We're going to talk about what overlay historic zoning is, it's happening tonight, and what is that, and why are we doing this now? What is the criteria for such zoning? And why are we interested in having this zoning for 308 State Street? And then just to review a group of our supporters that are with us in seeking this zoning change. Now, overlay zoning, historic, overlay historic zoning, the only thing it really does is to add Schenectady's Historic District Commission as a public entity that will oversee any changes or to the exterior of a property that has this zoning now. It is no different than, it's actually no different than any other historic district or landmark building in the city. It does not change any of the uses that are allowed by law under the, under the current zoning, and it doesn't restrict what you can do with your property at all. As you can see, just three of these examples that I picked out in the Stockade Historic District, we have Arthur's Market, and in the Union Street Corridor Historic District, we have an office building, I believe the address is 508, and the restaurant, Shenu, which has also been used for different purposes over the years. And as a matter of fact, one of our council members has her business in the Union Street Corridor, which has the same overlay zoning. So there's no restriction at all about what we can do, it's just that you need oversight from our Historic District Commission. Now, you might ask, why is the timing right for overlay historic zoning on these buildings? Well, the Heritage Foundation feels like Schenectady is really at a turning point now with its zoning and development and revitalization of downtown. We really support building on the success of Metroplex. Metroplex has been around for 20 years now, give or take, and we think they've done a fabulous job. We don't always agree with everything that's happened. We've lost some of our very nice architecture downtown, as we all know. But generally speaking, we think we're at a point now where we want to move away from the 1960s version of urban renewal, where it's really almost like a scorched earth type of policy, where if a developer was interested in doing a project in your town, you were so desperate, you had to accept anything that they said. Well, we think that we're far beyond that point in Schenectady. We have really good examples of our historic district, our historic architecture that have been retained and repurposed for a variety of uses, and you want that. As a matter of fact, in our comprehensive plan from 2020, it is specifically stated that we want to use overlay historic zoning in order to protect the best of our historic architecture. And when we have this appreciation for not only our district, but our historic built environment, we get a diversity of buildings, which attracts a diversity of businesses and of residents. And we feel very strongly that that's what creates a thriving city, which is where Schenectady is moving towards now. Now, here's the criteria for overlay historic zoning. You all got a packet from us, and I don't think I need to read all of this here, but it's basically that if a historic building has these qualities, it's identified with historic people or events, et cetera. These are the, this is the criteria where we make a decision. You know, this is what we use. We don't use, oh, can we afford X, Y, and Z? We don't use all these other things that doesn't match such and such. We are focused on, on these criteria. You're doing a great job. Of course, the, the most important building in this stretch of State Street is the Masonic Temple, the former Masonic Temple. And this is an old postcard, which really shows that probably around 1920 or so. And it definitely does possess special character, or historic or aesthetic interest or value as part of our cultural, political, economic, or social history of our locality, region, state, and board the nation. The Masonic Temple was built by the Brown family, actually, but the Masons took it over about a decade after it was built. And as we go on to our next slide, we'll see that the Masons were incredibly important in Schenectady's history. If you look over on our portraiture of mayors in this corner of this room, two-thirds of those men, and of course Karen Johnson would not be able to join the Masons, she would have been on the Eastern Star, but two-thirds of them were Masons, and many of them actually were grandmasters. The Masons started in Schenectady before the Revolutionary War, and also in our packet, there are many examples of some of the artifacts that this group of men still, still has, and they have a wonderful archive of historic documents. But to get back to their beginnings in Schenectady, George Washington actually visited them several times, and slept in the Stockade, in a building there, and he was, he himself was a grandmaster in Virginia. But our Masons here actually brewed the food that kept Washington's troops alive during the war in Valley Forge. Now, the temple that we're seeing now was built by the Brown family, and they had their furniture stored there in the early part of the 1900s. And one of Mr. Brown's daughters, Helen Brown, created Brown School, which actually is still, obviously, a school today. One of our very important people in Schenectady, Joseph Yates, who was our first mayor, I'm not sure if his portrait is up there, but he was the eighth governor of New York State, the Supreme Court Justice, and he was a master at our particular Masonic Lodge. And as I said before, most of our mayors have been Masons. So the current temple also meets the criteria for architecture. It is, no, we're going too fast now.
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you. It embodies the distinctive machine characteristics of both neoclassical and Italian Renaissance revival architectural styles, which people have questions about, you can ask me later. But it's, these are just some of the details and the overall view of the building. So the Masonic Temple is also an example of the work of a designer whose work significantly influenced an age, an era. It was designed by William Neil Smith. That little plaque is from the larger plaque that the Masons actually took off of the building when they sold it. And he was a contemporary of the architects that built this building, and also many buildings in Lower Manhattan, and a lot of them are in this historic district called the Stone Street Historic District. But he was quite influential, and both in New York City and in upstate New York. Little false city call, right here is another example of his building. The Masonic Temple, this is a panoramic view of the intersection of State Street and Erie Boulevard, and you can see that it really does occupy a unique location, and it's very imposing in this intersection. Imagine it without that building there. But if you have overlay historic zoning, at least it offers some protection to the best of our historic buildings. It's become, it's obviously a very familiar visual feature in this area, this neighborhood. Now, just moving on to the other buildings in the streetscape between Erie Boulevard and Railroad Overpass, again, it's the first four buildings. This building here was on the left, most recently, the Chamber of Commerce Building. And when I did research on these buildings, they all were built in approximately the mid-part of the 1800s. There very little changed over all those centuries, it's really amazing. And this building has a direct association with our first bank, the Omaha Bank, which started in the Stockade in 1807, and in 1820, it moved to the Stockade Inn. Of course, it wasn't the Stockade Inn then, because they were doing the settlement. And by 1907, the bank became a national bank, and they moved to State Street, but in a block lower than where they ended up. And after several mergers and acquisitions, they ended up in the Chamber of Commerce Building. And in the bottom right, you can see one of the early checks from Omaha Bank, our first bank. So they were witness to almost all of the major events in Schenectady over the centuries, you know, dealing with financing the Erie Canal, to financing some of the, some of our buildings that we're trying to save now. And the next buildings were consolidated into Redness Cloak and Storey, and most people are familiar with that. Before that, they, they really housed a great variety of small businesses in Schenectady, which of course is a great business model, we really are trying to do that now, so we're not a one company in town anymore, and I think we all, that turned out. But Redness itself was established in 1941, some seventy-plus years ago. And over those years, they were the go-to place to clothe all of our industrial workers that were here helping to build Schenectady into what it is today. Just masses of mostly men went to these stores to get their uniforms, you know, their, their work clothes, my dad included. So they have a great history with Schenectady. And if you look in the upper left corner photo, you can see that the buildings are very little changed from those days, even before those days. The big difference is, of course, the Nicholas Building is gone, and the Trusco Bank has taken over more buildings. So our supporters so far, both the Historic District Commission of Schenectady and the Planning Commission, support this zoning change unanimously. I don't know if I was ever at a meeting where those groups unanimously passed any book. They did put this. And in the community, we have the support of both the city and the county historians, the Preservation League of New York State, Schenectady County Historical Society, the Stockade Association, and the J. U. Wilkie Club Association, and importantly, the past masters of St. George's Masonic Lodge Number Six, which began in this building. Actually, didn't begin there, they began much earlier than that, but ended up in Schenectady at that building. And several architects and many individuals so far. So just to rehash why we're looking to get this protective zoning for this group of buildings, we want to preserve our historic resources and follow our comprehensive plan. You can see right here, it says, I don't know if you can read it, Act Two, provide historic district overlay protection zoning for important buildings. This was part of the Historic Preservation Section in our 2020 comprehensive plan. So this is what the community has agreed, they want Schenectady to be doing this. We also want to build on Metroplex's success, and we want to have that to support a vibrant and diverse downtown. So you can see, and this, this is a very old photograph, and you can see the Redness Buildings, they haven't changed very much. This is prior to the Masons building, their new building here, because that is the Brown Furniture Company. So we know that this photo is from around the turn of the last century. So we know that this photo is from around the turn of the last century. But here we have Rednecks with the bay window, the chamber building. They're essentially the same, which is pretty impressive after all these years. It shows that these buildings are very adaptable, and they've become sort of an iconic corner in our community. So I'm happy if you have any questions, or if anybody has them.
Any questions? So do you have in your packet all the... thank you very much. All the information that Ms. Kisten has gone over, and also a letter from the Planning Commission asking the city council to... recommend to the city council to amend the overlay historic district to include 308 State Street. Any questions regarding that?
Second.
All those in favor? Yes, Mr.?
Kind of getting ahead of where you're at, yeah. Because it's going to involve...
Oh, the public council.
Seeker.
That's right.
You see, designating the city council's lead agency, going through the seeker process, you know, the C. A., it's thirty-day public comment period.
Correct.
And then also a call for a public hearing at some point to change the code. Am I missing anything?
A call for a public hearing, seeker, and yes, you got everything.
So it's a question of, although it's not required, you have to do a public hearing to change the code. You can do a public hearing for the seeker process. You at least have to do a thirty-day public comment period as part of seeker. So it's going to be the lead ag... I would do it everything separately. Lead agency, opening up, and opening up the seeker. You've done, in the past, you've done that together. And then the thirty-day public comment period, and then a call for a public hearing. All right?
So we need a motion for all three of those?
We'd do one motion for lead agency and opening up the seeker process with a thirty-day public comment period. And then separately, you'd want a resolution to do a call for a public hearing for the zone changes. And if you're inclined also, as part of the seeker, to do a public hearing, you can certainly do that as well.
Okay. So the first one is, I would need a motion to name the city's lead agency and to do a seeker?
For the city council to be the lead agency and open up the thirty-day public comment period for the seeker.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next is to do a motion to call for a public hearing for the zoning.
Correct. Does that have to be delayed for the planning as?
What, what?
The change to the code. Are you delaying that until after the seeker period? So that's, they're not going to be back to that. Sorry, I just want to make sure that we have the order correct on this.
I don't think yet, I don't think.
You have to do the seeker period first, and then... So that will come back to the council for the...
Mr. Marney, do you want to adjust this?
Sure, they could run together. I do believe they could run together. If the council was inclined, they could run the public hearing. This would just be a public hearing for purposes of giving more public comment on the zoning change. So we're looking at seeker would be Monday, right? We'd open up the public comment period, that's Monday. That would be a thirty-day period. You could do the hearing at the conclusion of that, or you could run it simultaneously.
But I think the question was the actual code change for the overlay. That would happen after.
That resolution would happen, correct. That would happen after, after the seeker public comment period has been closed.
Okay. Thank you. So then the next would be to call for a thirty-day public comment.
That's part of the initial lead agency opening up the thirty-day public comment period for the purposes of seeker. Right, and then you can also do the call for separately, separate resolution call for a public hearing to amend the code. But you could actually take action to amend the code until after the public comment period is ended.
Right, but we can still call, we can still call for...
You can still do a call for a public hearing.
So it's a motion to call for the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move back to the top of the agenda. So Ms. Diop, a seeker for zoning code changes for banquet facilities.
Good evening, Ken. So this request is based on a lot of requests that we've received recently regarding how to operate banquet halls. So the current zoning code permits banquet facilities in the C3 waterfront mixed-use district, but that's the only district that they are currently permitted in and are use table. So due to this limitation, we've been seeing people trying to figure out ways to operate, you know, similar facilities, whether it's trying to do a social club or a private lodge. And there's a lot of, like, there's not a clear consensus from the definitions that were in the code about what each of these things were. So what we're proposing here is a zoning change request to allow for more opportunities for business owners to provide banquet facilities to serve the community in commercial districts. The Planning Commission is aware of these issues and discussions for the need to change the zoning code. You can see in the use table, we are proposing to allow it in all of our commercial districts aside from the C1 district, and also to allow in the M1 and M2 districts. I think that's kind of with the general overview. So there's two requests here, similar because it's a zoning code change. We're looking for the council to pass a resolution to declare lead agency for the environmental review for these changes. We've also provided the definitions that were amended to clarify banquet facility and private club and lodge. And this is related to an item that's further down the agenda when it comes to the certificate of use process. So that's going to be further down the agenda. So we're looking again to the council first declare lead agency for the environmental review.
Any questions, council members, questions? Intend motion?
So...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And so item number two, the call for a public hearing for zoning change. So moved.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you. The third item, agenda item, is approval to extend the CDBG contract with Miracle on Craig Street, Ms. Diop.
Sure, so we've been working with Miracle on Craig Street. You can come up as well. To focus on the redevelopment of the Harvard Community Center. This has been a work in progress for some time. We're back here tonight to discuss extending our timeline for the CDBG contract and also extension of the timeline that's in the current use agreement. Both of these are, I believe, set to end at the end of this year. And we want to give an update from, we have TAP on board who's providing architectural services. We have Barb Nelson from TAP. And we also have members from Miracle on Craig Street. So they're going to give a quick update on where the project is and the next steps. And then we can discuss these amendments to the timeline.
Second.
Could you come up?
Good evening. Good evening, council president, mayor, council members. My name is Barb Nelson. I'm an architect with TAP BLLC and I'm director at TAP Inc. We are a 54-year-old nonprofit architecture and planning office, and we do a lot of projects like this. We work with very distressed buildings. I'm sorry, I don't have photos for you, but we do have a presentation of the floor plans. Is that right?
We have them in our packet.
Oh, all right. Okay, I sent a slide different to Dan, but that's, that's good. Can you bring it up here?
Probably, I can get an email.
It's okay, it's all right. What I do have in my... Yeah, what you find in your packet are the architectural drawings to date. We are maybe 20, 30% finished with our architectures. And the engineers are on board. We had hoped to finish and get this out to bid by the end of the year. We're just locked, and that's just not happening. But we have promised to be out to bid in February so that we can have good competitive prices and we can be in construction this spring. The condition of the building, I'm sorry, I don't have photos. It's just been really tragically vandalized for 10 years. But the good news is that it wasn't a community center. It will be a community center again. It's not a change of use. The code issues are not terribly hard to comply with. So we are working to, at this point, to design the facility, pretty much putting it back to the facility that it was, so trying to keep costs as low as possible. Speak to the budget a little bit. We understand that Miracle has received or been awarded $1,250,000. We are doing our best to meet that as a budget. The biggest issue there is the mechanical systems that have all been damaged, removed. As you can imagine, copper and steel, everything has really been damaged and taken out. Windows are severely damaged or missing entirely. So my current budget that I've been, you know, trying to monitor is closer to $1,005,000, but we're doing everything we can to bring that down with every decision we make, whether to move a wall or not. If we don't have to move it, we're just trying to work as much as we can within the parameters of the existing building. The program for the building, which I could let the board members speak to, is also pretty much tailored to the building. So there'll be three classroom-type spaces. They may be rented to small startup businesses. They may be utilized for programs. There's a good-sized space that was the library, which also could be used for civic meetings or rented for individual programs on an event basis. And then there's the auditorium, which is not a regulation basketball court, but good for half-court and after-school and practices, as well as volleyball, badminton, yoga, play for Alcent Banquets, and community deals. And there will be a kind of lounge and lobby for informal meeting as well. So we're, aside from just doing the architectural plans and the engineering plans, we are working with the Miracle Board to lay all of that out. The uses and the spaces available, lay it out in a program document so that they can develop a pro forma. You know, this kind of space could be rented on a monthly basis and bring in this much a year. This kind of space might be an event and program area, so you might have a rental for, you know, two nights a week or five weeks for certain classes, that kind of thing. So we're trying to bring all that data together so that we are able to look at, you know, the potential income for the building and the potential operating costs. And it's looking, you know, right now, we're just using very conservative numbers, but facility income of roughly $50,000 certainly looks like it will cover the utilities and basic maintenance. Certainly, there's going to have to be, you know, fundraising that goes into sapping and things like that. But right now, our objective is to complete our plans by the end of January. And we very much hope that you will grant them the extension so that we can complete this. This is actually a historic building. It was, I guess, the original center burned, and was replaced in, some friends of mine grew up there in the summer. Oh, yeah, yeah, remember that place burned. But this particular building was built in the 70s with Fivers and Schmidt. They're very well-known architects in this area, and it is on the Historic Register. So we're doing our best to really keep it intact, work with what's there. And it's really a sound, sturdy building. It's just the mechanics have been completely ripped out, so that's where the majority of our cost is. Any questions?
I do have a question. The last time there was a presentation here, there was a talk about putting up a fence to kind of protect a perimeter in the parking lot, which people are using to walk, park whenever they feel like it. And now that the winter is here, I'm sure it's going to become even more so the parking lot. And I don't see that it's happened yet.
Right, right. I was asked to help with the fence, and I suggested that we get a survey and that we finish our preliminary site planning so that we know exactly where the fences should go and whether we should be changing locations of gates and whatnot. So that may be on me, but we'll be wrapping that up again before the end of January. We don't have to wait until the construction documents are complete. We had a meeting with the board last month, November. And I'm sure we could probably get that resolved at the next meeting. And we do have some bids, but I need to talk to those bidders and find out what plan they base that on and make sure it's the plan that we're ending up with. There's things like exiting from the auditorium. We need sidewalks, you know, it's a public area. So I just want to make sure the fences line up with, so we don't have to redo anything. We don't want to have to redo anything, so, okay.
Questions? Ms. Patrick?
Yes, could you remind me what the contingency on the funding is on this one? Ms. Diop, I'm sorry.
Yes, so I believe it was because we didn't have architectural drawings to price to figure out what the cost of the project was. We didn't know if it would exceed the funding that was allocated. From what I'm understanding now, they are trying to keep the budget within that number. But we have to really wait to see what the bids come back at. And at that point, we'll know. You know, we have, I think we've been, Barb and the team's been working on general cost estimates, but until we put it out to bid, we won't have that number. It sounds like that will be in February. And then we'll see if there is more funding that needs to be raised for the actual construction. However, I think a lot of the additional fundraising will be for the actual operating cost of, you know, running the building and moving into that. So I think before, we anticipated a much larger number, but I think we're now trying to tailor it to the funding that's available. And when the bids come back, we'll see if we need to, there needs to be additional funding for the, you know, that the ARPA funds would be continuing on. So we want to, we need to make sure we can complete the construction, of course. But we just don't have the number, the hard numbers, to say what that number is.
And that's really the CDBG funding that you're describing?
No, I'm talking about the ARPA funds. Yeah, the CDBG funding is sort of separate. And that was for the, to pay for the design services. There was also the fence that was going to be completed this summer. But it was, it just didn't make sense to move forward with that until we actually think related to the design of the building and more comprehensive look at the site and what needed to happen.
So the contingency on the 1.25 ARPA funding was that the fundraising that Carver needed to do in order to complete the project would be completed within now, by September of 2023?
Right, yeah, so that still, that still remains. And it's just a question of what is that final construction cost going to be? Does it fit within the money that's allocated? Or is there additional funding that's needed? No.
Ms. Winks?
So thank you for the presentation. I think a lot of members of the community are really excited to see this process move forward and know a lot of work's been done. I know you mentioned that your current budget is currently projected at 1.5 million. Are there any other outliers or questionable areas that have your immediate concern? I appreciate you being mild, but I think a lot of us want to make sure we're putting in place a resource that is beneficial and is not shortchanging the community, that is, in dining.
Right, right. Well, I was glad to see that Craig Street is receiving a full revitalization so that I didn't need to have sidewalks and trees in my budget anymore, that kind of thing. I can tell you that the house on Duane Street is not included in our, in that current budget. That was, that's an add-on to the work that we've been doing. But we'll, we're also working with the Seat Center to find out what items can be done, what elements of the work can be done as training exercises, as educational opportunities. There's going to be a lot of sheet wrap to be placed, a lot of painting, a lot of, you know, some minor carpentry. So we'll be working with Seat to see how we can bring those numbers down. And we'll be looking to find contractors that'll, you know, work with us creatively. But it'll be a full competitive process, and when we select a contractor, we'll start. So we've got a couple of things in there that we've identified as alternatives that we can pull out, you know, if the numbers come in too high, we want. We want to build a corridor through the courtyard. We can actually take that out. There's a number of things like that that we could kind of peel back and that can be done at a later time. But... But, but yes, our intent is to make the building whole, not to leave any part of it undone for a later time, and to provide the facilities that will be needed in the new school and the neighborhood.
Ms. Williams?
And just a secondary consideration, I know there have been volunteers actively working currently. I think it'd be smart to kind of identify that cost savings as a way to appreciate their work done and how that has saved some dollars.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, I got it. I'm Juliana Obi. I am one of the board members of Miracle on Craig and also a former Schenectady community member. And to your point, we have, we did figure out what the dollar amount was for the volunteers over the years. We have saved about $60,000 just having volunteers come by. We are very anxious as well to have that fence put up just to continue to safeguard our building. But thank you to our, every weekend, I think during the summer, probably from May all the way until November, we are volunteering or having volunteers come out to help keep the area clean. The last thing that we want is for the building to be an eyesore to the community, so we are very aware of the need for volunteers and the consistency that it takes to keep and maintain that, that area looking up and decent until construction is well underway. So thank you for asking that. And I do want to, if I may, I do want to speak to, I know that, a question for everyone, including board members, folks that are interested in the project, supporters of the project, whether financial or just in spirit, are always wondering, is our sustainability and what that looks like when the doors are open? So we did put together, and we will share with Kristen, we did put together what a projected first-year budget would look like when the doors are open, speaking to some of the partners that we would have in the space, speaking to the membership that we were charged to use some of the spaces that Barb was talking about, and how that can help us flourish when those doors are open. So we'll make sure that this committee gets all of, all of that, and it is just a projected. Definitely looking to work with organizations and businesses that are already up and running and very successful in the area, that can speak to what we want this community center to be, whether it be partnering with New Choices or Schenectady School District, Seat Center, of course, and other agencies, and bringing those folks on to partner with us to rent space out of and be a consistent partner so that we aren't having to go month by month and say, you know, we're bringing in this little bit of money, but really having those long-term contracts. So as the building starts to be worked on, we'll be able to do walkthroughs with those agencies so that we can show them what projected space would look like and getting some MOUs and contracts together for that sustainability.
Are there plans, this brought up that, you know, one point, what we gave may not be enough. So are there, it's a lot of the money there. What are the plans for other fundraising? We're getting matching funds to, are those kind of, are you working on those things at the same time?
Yes, absolutely. So now that we can almost, we can't take a breath, but we can almost take a breath in not having to fundraise for the, you know, the humongous project, the 1.2, 1.5, whatever it's going to cost. We are now, as a board, looking for donors to, I guess, increase the numbers. You know, we had an amazing event on Saturday, this weekend. Thank you for your attendance, Mayor. Thank you for your attendance as well. And those, while it's amazing to have those people in that space that have been supporters for the seven years we've been working on this project, we are absolutely, at the same time that Barb and her team is doing their thing, on the backend, we are also doing ours to make sure that we can cover any additional cost. And not just the building cost. Once the building is done, we have to furnish the building as well. So we're talking furniture, technology, applying for grants, applying for anything that makes us more energy efficient, anything that makes clean water, you know, in the building. So the list goes on, but now, as a board, we are able to kind of dig into another type of funding to cover more of the, the overhead, you know, costs and things that it will to make this building look beautiful like it deserves to be on the inside and out.
And Mr. Farley?
Yeah, so I just, I think it's noteworthy that when we talk about sustainability, that we also think about the longevity, which, you know, I think about this project lasting seven years. I think that that is actually a strength. I think that something that's very unique about this project is that there was, we were very intentional, I was fortunate enough to be a part of some of this initially, very intentional about getting input from the people that lived in the community. And I, and I think that when you have that level of buy-in and you have that level of being really culturally responsive and understanding the needs, wants, concerns, and strengths of the community, that that, you know, combined effort is something that speaks to sustainability in a way that we generally don't talk about, but I think that is equally as important and extremely noteworthy.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have two things before us tonight. The first is to approve the extension of the CDVG contract with Miracle on Craig Street, which is, oh, thank you, which Ms. Nelson spoke to. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the second one is to approve or amend the use agreement with Miracle on Craig Street unless there's more questions or discussions around that. I think they answered everything within their, within their presentation, but if anyone, anyone has additional questions regarding that?
I will, please.
Second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Okay, and we're going to, as we did, item five, so item six will be Housing Town Hall follow-up discussion. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. So I'm excited to announce that this past December 1st, we successfully held a Housing Town Hall where we had members from both sides of the conversation, tenants, landlords, homeowners, also members of local organizations just present and speaking to our city council. I think by all accounts, it was a success. It was definitely very well-attended, and the feedback that I got was very positive. I thought this would be an appropriate opportunity to hear from the other council members, their reflections on the event. I thought, from a baseline consideration, it provided a lot of members of our community the opportunity to see one of our very vital resources, the Boys and Girls Club. And then, secondly, I thought it was a nice opportunity for interaction. So I think commonly, when we hear of discussion, it's very easy for people to become defensive. And I thought one of the staples of that evening was the ability for people to listen from all accounts. I wanted to take the time to just address some of the tenant concerns, tenant recommendations, and also landlord concerns and landlord recommendations. I want to preface this, this is not all-inclusive, just a reflection of some of the discussion items that were brought up. From a tenant's standpoint, some of the concerns were month-to-month leases, the payment history, however, still being asked to leave. Secondly, it was properties sold right from underneath good, on-time tenants. And we're speaking more about the transient factor, and then also rents raising higher than wages. Some of the tenant recommendations centered around more stability in lease agreements, also addressing landlords who aren't taking care of their properties, and also instituted programs that turn dilapidated properties into more affordable housing for low-income and impoverished communities. And shifting gears, some of the landlord concerns were centered around an appropriate level of government involvement, putting that mildly, and understanding that solutions need to take into account rising expenses and why are homeowners considered easier targets? Secondly, there was landlords are simply looking to make ends meet. Will there be a cap on supply chain, labor costs, and also other associated rising expenses? And also perceptions of police being pro-tenant or anti-landlord. And then some of the landlord recommendations centered around segmenting larger, larger portion of our new developments to low-income families, offering incentives for landlords. And then also, I know Slick, their chair at the time, was present, talking about the landlord licensing program. So very powerful conversations that were present. I know some of the concerns were around rent stabilization and rent controls, and I'm excited to identify that there were a lot of recommendations to include that, but also understanding what our city council is authorized to do. Before I turn it over to the council members, I thought it was important to highlight, I appreciate the comments that I received from Chris Mallon. Initially, when this conversation was brought forward, it was understood to have quarterly meetings, and one of his suggestions was having this be specialized around a topic to kind of spur the community to address an issue rather than just having it just be present four times a year. Then also, I appreciate Maurice Brown giving insight into how the structure of the meeting was very necessary so that we captured information in a proper way and also welcomed the appropriate information. So again, thank you to everyone. Looking forward to hearing your comments and incorporating those into potential next town hall in the future, topic-dependent.
Other questions? All right, so Mayor, I wanted to ask you a specific one that was brought up about the landlord licensing program that's being discussed, that was mentioned at the meeting. So could you just tell us a little bit? Slick mentioned it, but didn't really get into a lot of these stuff.
It's an ongoing discussion with some of the council members, with Slick, some of the staff. They're updating a handbook. At this point, we're not, I think, prepared to come back with a final recommendation yet, but it's still being evolved and looked at.
Handbook for landlords?
Correct. That was done a number of years ago, and it's just being updated now.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I can say that I did hear from the Department of Development there, so on the tenant side, they do have updated tenant handbooks as well, so those are there and already available. So Mr., yes, Mr. Williams?
So I guess in conclusion, I'd like to make sure I'm not speaking for the council. I think the next steps definitely include working more collaboratively with some of our local organizations who are probably better suited to help impact this conversation. So if everyone deemed it appropriate, I'd like to forward these meeting minutes on to appropriate agencies, and then we can bring this back up for follow-up discussion to identify how to start actioning or evaluating what are actionable items from the notes.
Any feedback at all from council members based on the notes, sir?
Yeah.
Mr. Farley?
So I saw a lot of feedback as far as the town hall. I think that it was a great success. I think anytime that we increase access to government, we will increase participation, and I think that just by judging of the number of people that were there, this is clearly an issue that's resonating with our residents, and so we want to continue to do that. So I think that, you know, I'm really impressed and happy with the turnout that we had there. I think that the issue, when I brought it forward, just in the conversation here and that we had at our larger council meeting, I don't think that we really got to appreciate or understand the full breadth of the issue until we had the town hall. I think that just the attendance alone and people's ability, you know, we talk about this issue as one side, landlord side, tenant side, what I was most impressed by was that there was a lot of common ground there, and there was a lot of shared concerns, shared values, and shared expectations for us as a community. So I think that we are closer to, or in more agreement with one another than we think, and I think that that's why we have to be really intentional about creating the conditions such as a town hall where people can demonstrate that. So I just want to say that I was really, really happy about the town hall, the participation, and again, I want to make sure that, you know, to Slick and any other council members who are working on this, when I brought this forward to council, I initially said I welcome everyone as a thought partner, and I want to encourage you to, you know, please include me in those conversations, and let's continue to work together to find a solution.
So Mr. Williams and I did attend the Slick, last Slick meeting, Schenectady Landlords and Influencing Change, for those of you that don't know the acronym. And one of the, some of the feedback we got was specifically that they would like to see more of an interaction. At that particular meeting, we listened to what people had to say. They, you know, they gave their opinions, thoughts, experiences, which I thought was very important. So, but what was articulated at the Slick meeting from the members that were there, that they would want to have more of a back-and-forth, that they, you know, say what they have to say and us, you know, have a, to actually engage in dialogue as opposed to the, how we, how we presented the town hall. I don't think that we'd be in the opposition, we would just have to figure out what that would really look like, and I'm not sure how that would look in a, in a town hall format, but I wanted to bring that forward. And also during the feedback that was given at that meeting, we got a lot of positive feedback. People were happy that it happened and thought that it went well. And I will say, not that I expected anything different, that there was, you know, there was, everybody respected the other person's opinion. It didn't get, it was not controversial. As someone who tried to kind of imply in a meeting I was in recently, I'm like, that didn't happen. It was not this, it wasn't that. It was just, this is where I stand, and this is how I see it, and this is, you know, where I stand and how I see it. And like I always say, how you see it depends on where you sit. So we got to see both sides and how they saw it, and I think there were, people came away with appreciation for how the other person saw something they may not have had had they not had to heard it firsthand from the other person's account. So as we move forward, want to take in consideration all the feedback that we've gotten, whether it's at the meeting, the follow-up meeting that Slick had, and people can still, you know, give their input to council members. And council members, of course, are very much encouraged to give their input because it's a very serious problem that we have, we're having here in the city, and so we want to make sure that we're ongoing in terms of addressing it. So Mr. Williams, you'll follow up with the notes? Any other discussion regarding this? Anything else to come before City Development and Planning? If not, on the stage, a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, gotcha. I'd like to call to work on government operations. We have four items on the agenda. First, we're going to call a discussion regarding the new Schenectady, presentation by Mr. Neil Golub, President of Portfield.
Thank you. As you know, Mr. Golub, Neil came to see us a couple of weeks ago and did a presentation on new Schenectady, and we didn't take any formal action, and he then reached out to me and said that, you know, he really wanted something really specific and concrete from the council. So he's here again tonight to, just to say that, and because we didn't have any, there was no formal action taken. We discussed it. I can tell you, he said that he didn't feel like he got much feedback. So he's back tonight to kind of articulate to us exactly what he would like to see the council have happen. He would need this.
Well, maybe not. Let me see if I can.
No, no, so people can hear.
Okay. Okay, here we are. I'm back tonight because I really would like to get a sense from the Schenectady City Council about how you feel about this. The whole purpose of our effort was to gain reputation for Schenectady. That's what we started with a long time ago. Over the last 30 years, a lot has happened, and in the past few weeks, as a lot has happened. We have finally decided to work with a, with a plan that would bring our reputation back. The theme that we have picked is new Schenectady, and we have, we are in the process of finalizing a major billboard campaign that will basically say, we are new Schenectady. We have been talking with CBS about programming there, and they're very excited about the opportunity, not only for Schenectady, but for the opportunity it gives them as a business to promote their business in Schenectady, to promote Schenectady businesses. We've also talked with the Gazette newspaper, and they too are very excited about the opportunity of promoting Schenectady. Just the other day, a couple days ago, I got some interesting information as we get. The CEG, the Center for Economic Growth, report looks at growth, gross national product, if you will, for the region, 218 counties in northeastern United States. This is over the past few months, this has just come out. Schenectady County had the second-highest increase of 8.2% in New York State. The entire northeast, we ranked 15th. The other very positive finding is that our growth was across the board in real estate, hospitality, tourism, manufacturing, research and development. So what's happening here is really hitting some very strong cards. We did a market research with about 500 people this past weekend. Here's what we discovered. We discovered that 70% are aware of what's going on in this community. So people do know. There are always people in the community who don't have a clue and I'm always surprised. How do you drive around this community and not know that there's good stuff going on? We got problems, but we're working on them. I'm happy to see that you are. Also, we got information that the people of Schenectady feel very strongly, 70%, feel that we should be promoting ourselves and telling people about what we're doing. So that's been my role ever since I took this responsibility. I don't get paid a heck of a lot, as a matter of fact, I don't get anything. But the opportunity really was for us to create a reputation for ourselves. And I think we're now at the point where we're ready to go. And the theme of new Schenectady was the very best one that we could choose because new can get dropped off at any time if we should so choose. But by using the word new, it's going to cause people to ask the question, what are you talking about? What do you mean? And so that's what I want to try to do. And I've been moving ahead. We've got a beautiful billboard campaign. CBS, WRGB is excited. I talked with those people and said, you guys forgot what made you famous. And they looked and said, what are you talking about? I said, television was invented here. You don't tell anybody about it. You've got lots of things to be, to be famous for. And so here we are. And I really like to know. Also, I think you all know that one of the things that we did, we decided to write a book about what happened here. Think about it, a history book on what's happened in Schenectady over the past 30 years. That's pretty exciting. The author is Bill Patrick. He's a famous local author. He's, he's a professor at college, teaches writing, and he has written the book. And as a matter of fact, he had given me some copies that I'd like to share with the council so you too can read the history of Schenectady, what's actually happened here over the past 30 years. I really appreciate your feedback on it. I think it's quite an achievement. So my question is, do you support the idea of us working hard to promote new Schenectady? We are new Schenectady and talking about ourselves as new Schenectady. Do you support that position? Don't everybody answer at once? Knocked off my perch, okay?
So I guess I would start by saying, there's nothing more powerful than a narrative about a city or a place or even circumstances. And I think that, you know, I have friends and family that don't live too far from here, but when they come to visit, have been like, wow, bring them downtown to a show and, you know, they're, they're very impressed with our city here and, you know.
I've heard that over and over.
Yeah, yeah.
It's one of the things that drives me.
Yeah, so I would, so though I'm encouraged when I hear it, like, oh, that's why. Then it does kind of back the question of, well, what did you think about Schenectady? You know, for you to be so surprised that this is your experience now. So I think that, you know, just those type of exchanges and the fact that you're saying that you've had similar conversations, kind of, you know, it's a testament to the fact that we need to make sure that we're better at telling our story. So I think.
That was very clear in the research.
Yeah.
The community, the people that we researched told us that 70% said you need really to promote yourselves better.
Yeah, yeah. So I appreciate all the work that's happening in Schenectady. I think that, yeah, anything that will allow us to better tell that story and communicate to the people, the type of community that we are, and I think even going back to our earlier conversations, right down toward the town hall we just had, I left feeling, we are a community of solutions. You know, people didn't just come with complaints, people came with solutions, suggestions and pledging, you know, some level of support. So, yeah, I, you know, and I definitely support the idea of branding ourselves in a way that is engaging.
Who's your name is?
I'm sorry? I'm Councilman Farley.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, yes. New Councilman Farley.
Good for you. I'm sorry, we hadn't met before.
So no worries.
Anybody else got a feeling?
My line, yeah, that's my line. Any other conversation? About that? Mr. Williams, please.
So I appreciate your candidness and asking for, do you support this? And words matter to our entire community. We're not saying Schenectady is perfect, it is not perfect Schenectady, it's new Schenectady. And I appreciate you trying to be our biggest cheerleaders and that's something that a lot of people struggle with. I think now is the perfect time to take a pause and appreciate the strides that have been made. And I can absolutely see our local community getting behind that. I do not think that it is far-fetched to say that trying to differentiate between the old perspective of how people view Schenectady is something that I battle with day in and day out. People come here and they are the assumptions of coming to an inner city and it's frustrating. But I think the way we combat that is identifying how we've made improvements in such areas and how we're continuing to build on this new narrative. So I'm supportive of Schenectady.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes?
Hello, how are you?
Hi, dear.
I think that, first I want to say thank you for everything that you've done already to this point in terms of trying to boost our reputation and get the word out to folks that it is a new Schenectady. And I think anything that we can do to try to, as you and I have discussed, try to enhance our reputation and bring a more positive spin to what has been happening here over these last couple of decades is very powerful and I appreciate all the work that you've been putting into it.
Any other council members have something to say? Yes?
Thank you. Good evening, Neil. So absolutely, as far as the new Schenectady, to me, Schenectady is Schenectady and has a special place in my heart. I thank you for everything that you do. As far as new, I'll go with it. But it's Schenectady and it'll always be Schenectady. And it has a lot of history and has a lot of good people and has a lot of great businesses. And I'll go with it, new and improved.
Old and improved.
As a marketing tool, which we know your gene is at, so.
I don't think I'll go that far. Not even my mother would go that far.
So I'm, I'm, I'm in. I mean, if you're willing to put the time and effort into this, then I'm in. As long as we just remember it, so is ours.
I've done most of the creative work. I am our advertising agent. I have done that. I've worked with Sean Gonzalez, he's a, he's a price jockey. He's offered the help with the billboard and so forth. So I have gotten some help, but most of it I'm doing myself thus far. Anybody else got a comment? Sir?
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you're doing and highlighting Schenectady. I'm very supportive of all the work that you're doing and highlighting the positive things that's happening in Schenectady. So I want to thank you and I'm very supportive of it and whatever help I can be, I'm glad to help in any way possible to help you promote Schenectady. Schenectady is here for all of us.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Farley?
They're all quiet. I think it's been mostly said, so.
Say what you have to say, sir.
Just it. So I wish you well and I think it'll go very well.
And you think it's a good idea?
I think it's something that will help with the marketing of the city and that's a good thing.
Okay, good. I got what I needed. I have a box of books, I'm going to open it, leave it for you.
They have the one single?
But I think it's important to kind of push back and get a clear answer. I think everyone else and Mr. Golub, to your credit, has asked.
Everybody, my friends call me Neil.
Neil Golub.
Thank you.
Neil Golub. I think it's appropriate to give him an instant answer, so I would like to get his answers.
We just got a straw poll, so I think we're good, but anyone has to answer.
Want to take a vote?
I don't know if that's exactly how that works. I just wanted to.
How about to hear it from our mayor?
I support it.
Yes, so I think that we have, have my support. So the full support of the council, the question becomes what that support looks like? Do we offer a resolution or do we just offer a letter of support? Because as I had a conversation with the mayor today and he was bringing up some, you know, all the things that have happened that all of us know, the things that have, how things have improved downtown and development, all the many, many things that could be part of it, which, just to be clear, we're not changing the name of the city. Simply using his marketing to say Schenectady is new and all the things that have happened over.
Just like Tide used it when they said new Tide and then it went away. But what happened to their sales when they said it was amazing. And it will happen here too. People will ask all of us, what do you mean new? And then you explain to them and what people are telling you. That's what I found out, so.
And I also think it's noteworthy that we don't, you know, this isn't just, you know, a shiny new name. This is really a name that's reflecting the work that has already been done and that's continuing to happen. And I think that's a really important distinction because it's not just a name, it's, we're, we're not renaming it, we're, we're saying that we want to make sure that when we reference Schenectady, we include the renaissance that's happening and that's continuing to happen, so. Any other, anyone else further thoughts or discussion on that?
So, so the question becomes, do we support it in form of a resolution?
Or a letter of support?
Right.
We can just say, we don't have to have a letter.
You don't even have a resolution?
I can see your faces and I can see how you're responding. And every time we've talked to any organization, group of people, there always has been a series of smiles. And I think the fact that we can see what's already happened here speaks for us. The fact that so many people want us to talk about it and show our pride is going to help this, this community to show itself as a better place. Look, I was born here in 1937. Who's a mathematician figured it out? Okay, never mind. But thank you for your attention, everybody. Thank you.
So you don't need anything further?
No.
Okay, well, thank you for coming back.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So our next item is the Civilian Police Review Board. Mayor McCarthy?
No, no, we're not going.
Oh, we're not there yet?
Number one, call for help here.
Oh, could be taken out of order, okay. I was anxious to hear. Yeah, excited about that. Okay, so we'll go to Christopher Martin for a CPH.
So in connection with the zoning changes that Mr. Diatta proposed with respect to the banquet facilities and private clubs and lodges, we are also proposing an update to the city's certificate of use process. For those that aren't aware, the certificate of use process is something that most businesses, many businesses are required to go through in the city. It's processed by the law department. And it's specifically for purposes of ensuring that those businesses are operating with all the correct approvals, that they have their health department permitting, that they have their liquor licenses. And it's specifically geared for restaurants, bars, any premise for alcohol is being served on a premise, convenience stores and secondhand dealers. So those businesses all come, they make an application, they put forth their, all of their documentation, insurance requirements, and they can get a certificate of use. With the changes, especially with allowing banquet facilities now in all commercial districts, arguably under the certificate of use process, any, any business that was providing food on-site or alcohol on-site would already need to require, we thought it would make sense to provide some clarification and ordinance to make sure that the public was very crystal clear that those businesses would be required. So we've added banquet facilities to the certificate of use chapter for the use ordinance in addition to private clubs or lodges. While we were amending the ordinance, we thought that we would also add tobacco and cannabis retail and consumption lounges as a newer use that hasn't previously been contemplated and included modifying portion of the ordinance as cannabis is now legal and our ordinance contemplated it being included. So we've made those changes. There was one recommendation that I did receive with respect to the definition of the cannabis and tobacco consumption lounges and that was to remove the and/or language and just state or. So it would be tobacco or cannabis retail and consumption.
Okay, any, any questions, comments on this? I have a question myself, though. So we're saying the and/or moving the and/or language, could you just come over that again? So I wasn't clear.
So the feedback I got was that that was confusing and you're getting back, it might be a little confusing. The idea was that if you had cannabis and tobacco, or you were cannabis or tobacco, that you would require certificate of use, but really the or captured both. Even if they were in one business, if they had one or the other, capture both. So it's just a language question. And that would include vape shops as well. So vape shops, smoke shops, cannabis retail, where cannabis is, cannabis or tobacco are the primary item base, so.
Mr. Mr. Farley?
I'm sorry.
Oh, me first?
Yes, yeah.
And now I'm, no.
I can come back to you. So obviously, one of the businesses that currently the code anticipates needs to get certificate, certificate of use as a convenience store. I've noticed something that we've heard anecdotally, that there have been a lot of vape shops and smoke shops that have been opening. They do not necessarily fall within the definition of convenience store the way we have it defined in the code. By, you know, by including vape shops and, and smoke shops and also these cannabis retail consumption locations, we are capturing those businesses that, you know, they may sell chips, right? And they may have, you know, beverages, but they don't fall within the definition of convenience store because they don't have the daily, you know, products that you might find in a convenience store, which is what is anticipated, the definition of convenience store. So part of that, you know, I think is the thought process we have in including these businesses. And certainly they're a concern for code enforcement purposes and that's one of the requirements after you get a certificate of use is that you get a, an inspection of the premises to make sure that it's safe because you're going to have people from the public going there and potentially staying some time in there. So that was, I think, again, part of, part of the thought process in terms of banquet facilities and private clubs or lodges is, Mr. Marty indicated, we're looking to change the zoning code as it relates to that. This is really somewhat similar to, you know, a food establishment, when you talk about a banquet facility in a private club or lodge or a bar, and a bar is any place that serves alcohol. So it doesn't mean a bar in maybe the sense that we think of a bar, you know? So if you serve alcohol, you're considered a bar under the code. So this makes it clearer, since we're now, you know, potentially going to allow these facilities within the city, to make sure that it is completely understood that they too are subject to having to get a certificate of use.
I did remember.
You got it, you remember?
I got it. So what I was curious about is, how will this affect existing businesses? Like, will there have to be code enforcement going back to businesses that are already operating or are they, what's your sense of businesses that are existing out there that don't have the certificate? You see what I'm saying?
So with respect to banquet facilities and private clubs and lodges, if they are already selling food or have alcohol on the premise, they would be required to have a certificate of use under the current code. So even if you're doing like a BYOB, you still need a liquor license and you still need a certificate of use from the city of Schenectady. So those businesses are already really required to get a certificate of use. There may be, obviously, we don't have any cannabis retail yet. So the only businesses that may be existing are the tobacco retail and consumption lounges and vape shops. So there are many of them throughout the city that do not currently have certificate of uses as they are not captured as a convenience store.
So how will we be getting the word out? I mean, this is for a public hearing, I understand, but, you know, getting the word out to those existing businesses and then is that a code enforcement piece in terms of who's going to go out there and?
That's a great question. The city council has changed the code in the past related to certificates of use. It actually used to be that certificate of use was just good, you didn't have to renew it. Now you have to renew it annually. And in the past, what has happened is code enforcement has sent out letters to businesses saying, you need to have a certificate of use. And they've given them a period of time to make sure that they are responsive, right? You know, most of those businesses, we know their retail locations, we know how to, you know, send the mail so that they actually receive it. Or we already have something on file because maybe they pulled a permit in the past and we can send something directly to the business owner. So we have, we do send letters out to let them know that's what's happened in the past, that's what I anticipate will happen if the council were to make these changes to the code. We make sure that, you know, because We make sure that, you know, because, you know, the idea here is that we're not looking to punish anybody for not having it, we're looking to make sure that people actually comply with the law, that we know that their premises are safe. So we want to encourage people to, you know, apply for the certificate of use, provide us with the necessary documentation, get the inspections, et cetera. So we'll be sending, you know, when I say we, it's the city, it doesn't it hasn't come from the law department, it comes it has come from code enforcement in the past, yes.
So for people, so you're saying to people who don't right now have a certificate of use, they will there will be an expectation for them to get one, what what are we thinking about a timeline for that? I'm just thinking about, I'm a small business and there's things like, I'm just, you know, I want to make sure that we're being fair and equitable to our small business owners.
You know, I can't answer that question, what the timeline is, you know, because I don't issue those tickets, obviously. That comes from code enforcement. I think generally, though, you know, there is there's a realistic expectation, you know, that people will, you know, comply. And and to be honest, in the past, before anybody's sent to court, you know, for not having a certificate of use, we make sure that a letter's gone out, you know? That was a question in the past. They get a letter to notify them that they need to have a certificate of use. When they go through the planning, through site plan approval process, one of the things that comes up from development is, hey, you're opening a business that's subject to having a certificate of use, you need to make sure you get that before you open up. And, you know, usually there in the past, there's been some back and forth. I know I've had correspondence with Mr. Mudavaran about this, where somebody doesn't have a certificate of use, then they apply, and maybe they don't have all the documentation, so it's been denied. They're not being sent to court right away, right? We're working with them to make sure that, you know, they get the documentation that they need. Now, there's this thing, on the other hand, where some people just kind of ignore the fact that the law is, you know, such where you need to get a certificate of use. And, you know, we try to, you know, get them to comply. Obviously, we can't, you know, we can lead them to water and tell them, here's the application, here's the here are the things you have to submit, but we can't, you know, force them to submit it. So in those instances, they do get sent to court. In terms of, you know, an actual timeline, I don't have that, you know? I can't tell you. I think it's, you know, we use some discretion and we're reasonable. You know, obviously, this is just a call for a public hearing, and maybe, you know, there's some thought to be flushed out if this goes ahead and how we're going to, you know, internally notify those business owners to let them know that, you know, if this goes through, you know, if it does go through, what we will be doing in terms of notifying them. No, I don't think that is something that's going to happen overnight where all of a sudden, you know, the council passes the change to the code, and the following day, if people haven't applied, they're going to get tickets, right? I think there'll be a notification process, like there is with renewals, to let people know that, you know, hey, the code's changed, and now you're subject to, you know, this particular section of law that you weren't previously, you know, having to follow, and here's what you have to do.
I mean, I guess that can flush that more during a public hearing, but I do think that if we are changing something and we know as to what date in effect that that change would be in effect, I think that it wouldn't be too much of an expectation to say that if a letter goes out on this day, we're, you know, whoever we send that letter out to has this amount of time, because I appreciate the ability to be flexible with people, I think that's important. However, when we have matters of compliance and we use discretion, then we open the door for inequity. So I think that we should just really, as a city, be paying close attention to that.
And certainly, if the council was to agree to these changes, you know, you can go with an effective date, right? Potentially, you can go, this is effective 30 days from, you know, passage, so that, you know, during that time period, then, you know, that gives code enforcement time to reach out. And, you know, knowing that in 30 days, this is now going to be in effect, and you have to be ready to go in 30 days to apply and, you know, for your certificate of use and have your paperwork in so that you're not out of compliance, right?
Since there are specific businesses that currently do not are going to fall under this but don't have it, and we know what those businesses are, are we going to be making them aware of at least the call for a public hearing? I don't know how many people like read the paper and recognize even what this code means and what it may mean for them. So these particular businesses are now going to be impacted by this. Are we going to be sending a letter, I suggest, to let them know?
That doesn't come from, I mean, that's certainly up to the council, send letters to those businesses. In the past, that hasn't come from the law department, businesses or, you know, certain folks are impacted by a change to the code. It's one of those things where you kind of just have to pay attention to what's going on at the city. You know, that certainly that's, you know, city council can, you know, look and send letters out. I don't have a listing of all those businesses, obviously. That's not something that our office has. We don't maintain a list of all the vape shops or smoke shops in the city of Schenectady. In my office, that is, that's not to say that, you know, there is an ability to, you know, identify them, maybe in another department.
So if they exist, then there must be a way to identify. If they're doing business in the city of Schenectady, there's got to be a way for us to identify that they're they're here and doing business.
Well, I think part of the process is that this is one of the reasons why, you know, I think also we're requiring a certificate of use, because we may not always be able to identify every single smoke shop or vape shop, but if we create a requirement, then we can then follow up to see if they have a certificate of use. You know, I can tell you, obviously, anecdotally, just, you know, being around the city, I see a lot of smoke shops. I don't know, you know, who the owner is, I don't know the exact address, and I certainly couldn't, you know, list every single one because I haven't seen them all. I just know that there are quite a few out there. But certainly, the law department doesn't maintain a list of those, you know, smoke shops and vape shops. I'm sure I can do a Google search, right? And then figure out where they are, but there may be another department in the city that has that information, but the law the law department doesn't have that.
Well, I really think there's a way we should be able to tell businesses that this is going to happen. It's you haven't had to have it before when you opened your business, but you have to have it now, or this is coming, or even have give them an opportunity to come to the public hearing. I think that's if it's if it's not something like you spoke to the other ones already know that when they start their business, but we are considering doing something different to businesses that did not need it before. So I think even making them aware of the public hearing, if we can figure out a mechanism to do that, it's important so that people won't come and say, well, I didn't know. So I believe we should really try to figure that out.
Well, we can come and say they didn't know. And as Mr. Gold said, code is very good to work with them. This is what you need, it was new as of whatever day, you know, if we pass it, it goes into effect. Here's the applications, this is what you need, we'll make an appointment with code to come to make sure you're compliant, you're building, and we're done. I mean, because, again, I mean, you can't put a notice on TV or maybe on a website, you can put it, but again, you know, these small businesses are busy running businesses. They're not always reading the newspaper, going to the website to see what's in. But again, so you're not in compliance, they come in, here's your application, we'll work with you, that's that.
Which is exactly my point, that they're not reading, looking every day and paying attention because they're running their business. So therefore, we should figure out a way to let them know. Not only does it let them know, it gives them an opportunity to come to the public hearing and to see if they have to say. So I, again, will reiterate that I we need to, if these businesses, if we're changing something that's way different than what we're currently doing, that we can figure out a way. I can't imagine it's that difficult to make make these businesses aware. There's got to be a list somewhere.
So the clerk's office works for us. We could ask the clerk's office to work with the assessor's office to find out the businesses and send out a letter.
That works for me.
Question?
Yes.
Would the Department of Development already have a list considering something inside and all that other stuff?
Well, the department, would the Department of Development have any of that information, Ms. Diop? How's that?
We probably don't have a comprehensive list because it would just be the ones that have come to us for other people's. So I think probably working between the departments, you could come up with something, but we don't have a comprehensive. Like, I wouldn't want to include some and not others, and I would want to make sure that we did it comprehensively, obviously.
So working with the clerk's office, I would ask that we come up with a comprehensive list so they can know about this. I think it's important. And not when after it's all said and done, they didn't give a chance to give their input, and now it's said and done because others, or maybe sometimes no one comes in for public hearings. So this is impacting people's business, so.
May I ask clarification?
Yes.
Specifically, are you are you looking for us to make an attempt to notice the businesses that already warrant coverage? So this is specifically just the tobacco retail and consumption?
This is a change for them, is that correct?
That would be a change for them. Anybody else that already had food or alcohol already?
They already have that, right. Only the ones who this is a change for them. So they're aware that the others already knew that.
In all our spirit.
Well, we'll support you as much as we can, but I just want to make sure that we're trying to be as fair as we possibly can to our business owners who are making changes.
Quick question. So under the code right now, as it exists, when we think about like places like a kind of like a convenience store like this, like our Cumberland Farms, Stewart's, they all fall under that right now?
Correct.
Yeah.
They fall under.
The convenience gas stations and other units, so.
Any other questions? Any other thoughts on that?
I'm going to move to the public hearing.
Sorry, because I'll make a motion for a call for public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you both. If you'd like that.
Okay, so next on our agenda is the Civilian Police Review Board of Mayor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Police Community Review Board is made up of individuals recommended by different entities within the city. Schenectady United Neighborhoods has sent in the name of Ms. Sido, who's a primary member, and Ms. Isaacs is an alternative. I've submitted that to you and ask for your favorable consideration.
Any further discussion, thoughts on that? I'll accept a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so the next on our agenda is a discussion around the Clean Slate Act. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. So this is definitely a very progressive topic. Clean Slate, simply put, is racially objectivity, public safety, but most importantly, it's an economic justice bill. We have a few speakers in attendance tonight, I'll call up shortly, but just providing some background. Clean Slate Act, which is passed in the New York State Senate, I do have the bill numbers, it's currently sitting in the assembly, will automatically seal conviction records. And I feel part of the issue with that is understanding what records are sealable. So quickly, three years for misdemeanors and seven years for felonies. It allows individuals to move on and fully return to the society. So part of the issue that I think is at hand is the effects of COVID, and they are long lasting, and none of which are more notable than unemployment and lack of affordable, safe housing. So partly, that this community of individuals with convictions, the stigma commonly associated with a person having such is that it places them at a tremendous advantage, absent any considerations for time served and continued good conduct. So this bill, simply put, eliminates barriers to stable employment and housing, which are foundational pillars of any successful household. That is not an argument, that's a fact. So taking the necessary steps to align our community with other municipalities that have joined these efforts seeks to bolster our community. So we continue to talk about a new Schenectady, in which Mr. Gold was still present, and how we can take active steps to ensure that these individuals who have served their time, who have continued to put forward the best efforts, making sure that these types of penalties are not long lasting or perpetual punishments that place them at a continued lose-lose situation. So I think it's an appropriate time, and I want to make sure I get their bios correct. I would like to ask Trent Reif to come up. Who was the founder of Tech Valley Hospitality Shuttle in 2016 to improve the accessibility of food, medicine, and employment opportunities in or around the Catholic District of New York? Today, the shuttle service also provides transportation to more than 50 hotels, including those owned by Marriott, Hilton, and Weddings. And clients include Starbucks and FedEx. And at the discretion of Council President Portillo, this weren't a highway. The automatic ceiling, I'm just going to re-verbatim from an information packet that we received, for misdemeanors, it's three years for sentencing, excluding any time spent incarcerated, and for felonies, it's seven years from sentencing, excluding any time spent incarcerated. And also, the persons eligible for this are those that have completed their jail time and prison time, that have completed probation and paroles. The convictions, to be clear, does not excludes sexual offenses, and then they must have not accrued subsequent New York State convictions or impending charges during their wait period. So Trent, I appreciate you being here, just provide some life experience around how.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing? My name is Trent Reif, like I said. I operate Tech Valley Shuttle. I also have another business, GB Logistics. I'm my businesses are ranked third and fifth as BIPOC businesses in the capital region, largest BIPOC. So together, if you put my businesses together, I probably am the biggest African American who puts in the capital region. Match that with my organization, Tech Valley Shuttle, this year was just nominated, actually the first black-owned business to ever be nominated by the Albany Business Review as one of the best places to work. Give you a little historical data like that, employing about 100 people, fleet of around 50 vehicles at this time. But at one point, I was identified as 0581273. That was my DIN number in 2004, 2005, when I went upstate to prison for a four to 12-year prison sentence for for narcotics sales. I say this is all relevant because, one, I had to go through so many barriers upon release. I was continually told no or not given jobs. I was, I actually couldn't go back to college immediately because I wasn't able for like eligible for certain grants and things of that nature. At the time, my wife now was living in housing, but housing wouldn't let me stay with her because of I was a convicted felon. So I literally have lived through the effects of what this bill is going to be able to help others not have to go through. And I think that's very important because as I started with, being someone who now operates some of the largest back-owned businesses in the area, best places to work, highlighted at Forbes, Bloomsburg, you know, just has a lot of positive things going on. I I'm one of the very few who are able to come out and redefine their lives in that way because of the barriers. But I do believe in my heart, if some of these barriers were renewed, you would see a lot more success stories just like that. And additionally, on top of understanding the effects from now, business, I'm going to put my business cap on now, and all we hear about is the great resignation, how employers are struggling to find employees at this time. But my organization, actually through our driven-to-work program, we help employee, we have helped employers find employees. And the big portion of these employees are individuals who were formerly incarcerated. So I know for a fact that there's many local businesses, Mr. Golub, who was just in here, I know Golub employs a lot of individuals who come home from incarceration, and a lot of other major employers in the area do the same. And so a bill like this is, in my opinion, a no-brainer, being someone who's actually lived through it. But on top of that, the economic effects it has on this region, actually on the whole state, is is also makes it a no-brainer in my mind. You have over 30,000 people incarcerated in jail right now, prisoners and docs right now. Facts show that 95% of people who are incarcerated are going to be released. So you have nearly 28, 27,000 people who are going to be released back into the community. And it also see, we also see that percentages and rates about half of the people will go back to jail. But with a bill like this, I can almost guarantee that you will see that number go from half to probably half of that percentage as well. Half of the barriers, if you can't find employment, most people are going to be stuck doing things that they probably shouldn't be doing. And a lot of times, you can't find employment because you're being punished for something that you already served time for. So again, a bill like this is absolutely a no-brainer, in my opinion, from from a business standpoint, from my business head-on, as well as from the fact that I actually have lived through the effects of what this bill is hoping to change.
Thank you. Kind of ask questions? I was going to invite the second. Oh, sure.
So at this time, I'd like to, being Trent from the present, invite Cardell Griffin, who was born and raised in Schenectady, New York. Cardell is the father of Ford, will be known in the future as the father of investing, his investment philosophy.
Carvel is the father of Ford, will be known in the future as the father of investing, his investment philosophy is minimal debt, buy and hold while buying within the same community as you grew up in.
Hello, great evening, City Council, everybody else. My name is Carvel Griffin, formerly known as 11013052. Now, the difference between me and his journey is, I was in federal prison. So when you go to federal prison, you don't have the same barriers as state prison when you're released. So when I was released and I went to get a job, I didn't have that same barrier of somebody telling me no. So my mother-in-law, she worked at Momentum Performance Theater with the Center of Waterford. And she told me, "Come over here, you're going to have to take a test." I took a test, I passed it. It was a math test. Passed the math test, I went to the interview. And the best thing about the interview was, I got some FaceTime like this. Because if you look at me on paper, I don't look like nothing. I'm just that 11013052 with them charges, that were Joe charges, right? So when I got that FaceTime, and it was in front of five separate people, they actually decided to hire me. So I got hired. When I got hired, I went into a building that was outside the chemical plant. It was more manufacturing. And my mother had been in that building 30 years. So she walked me in there, and she showed me what to do. And everything there was test-driven. It wasn't what your knowledge was about anything. If you could pass that test, if we train you, you pass that test, you'll move up. So I ended up moving up. I ended up playing chess over there, and I went into the chemical plant. But when I got into the chemical plant, it was a little more different. It was more, nobody looked like me really. I was in a building with 50 people, and I worked in methanol, and salachines, and sulfuric acid. You know the black rail cars that you see run around? I unloaded them into silos and stuff like that. I checked a lot of temperatures, things of that nature. So long story short, I get into this building, and I'm in the building, I'm doing well, right? And somebody starts to research me. They, they, they figured out some way that, they researched me. So now they had a meeting about me being in the building without danger. We had sulfuric acid, we had methanol, we had chloride. So it, it was just an awkward position. And one person actually stepped up for me that was on my shift, and he ended up having the same birthday as me, his name was Bill Mead. So he trained the hell out of me. Like, when I stayed, when everybody else was sleeping on that third shift, he had me up, making sure I was going to be successful. And it, it just was, it was monumental. It was somewhere that I'm looking, I'm like, there's nobody in these places that looked like me. Nobody that was working there was actually, that looked like me, nine times out of 10, was the janitors working for, I forgot the company, but I'm sitting here at nighttime, I'm making $40 an hour, and I'm asleep. We're asleep next to computers, long as nothing's going wrong in this chemical plant. You're asleep, you're making money. Everybody in there is making 70,000, $100,000, doing literally nothing. And I couldn't believe it. I'm like, are you serious? All I got to do is show up here. So long story short, me inclining, trying to get to the next level. It's a camaraderie thing. When you work with somebody, I worked swing shifts. So one week was 3:11, you'd be off the weekend, then you work 11:07 for seven days, then you work 7:03. So when you're working with somebody in this place, excuse my language, I slept, ate, and cooked. Everything, everything happened there. We had a kitchen, workout, everything. It's like the fire, like the fire company. You do everything there. So it was my time to, some tests came, and you could pass tests, you could move up. So I didn't know it. I didn't have the information, but I knew I could pass the test. It came time, I went and took the test, I passed the test. I went to another shift. I had nobody to hover over me on that other shift. The person that I took his job, basically, he was my trainer. I took his job because he didn't take the test. But I did take the test. So they moved me into his position, and his job was to train me. And he would lose his extra $5 an hour. Because what happens is, is five people on the ship. If one person doesn't come in, the lower man on the bottom, which is me, I have less seniority, I automatically make extra $5 an hour. You have 60 days, you have 90 days, you have 120 days that you don't come to work because you've been there for a signification. So automatically, I'm making 20,000 to 30,000 dollars extra. I was going to be able to have that once I moved into that shift. But I couldn't get that when I moved into that shift because there was some opposition. People ganged up on me, knowing that I didn't know the job, and it was just, it just didn't work out. But needless to say, during that time, I saved my 401K. They matched 5%, I put 15% into my 401K. I saved my 401K after taxes. They usually tell you, save 401K before taxes, whatever it is, you'll save some money. No, you're not saving much money. It's $50, $100, you're not saving. But, long story short, when it was time for me to exit Momentum on a positive note, and I seen my time wasn't going to be there anymore, I took my 401K and I invested it in the housing. I invested it in Schenectady. So I own multiple properties, commercial property in Schenectady right now. So I'm saying, I have to say, the foundation for anybody coming home from prison or any of these situations, you need, you need a foundation. It's like a house. If you start building on something that has a bad foundation, eventually it's going to crack. It's going to fall. So having this Clean Slate Act and just having somebody to have FaceTime and say, "Hey, I am this, I'm not this piece of paper." And it's seven years. That's a long time to be doing something correctly. Especially coming from the situation and the environment this town was coming from. We haven't had, we just haven't had the same opportunity. Because I know, I know I have. You know, and a lot of people that look like me or don't look like me, just coming from that environment, need this right here. It's, it's the case of somebody, when everybody's trying to survive, you're going to do something when you're trying to survive. But if you're already living, you got a house, and you can make certain different decisions. You can actually make a decision. You were not making, people that are surviving aren't making decisions. Whatever they did, they didn't make that decision. They just walked. And the decision was kind of made from, from the environment that it came from. But when you're able to live, have somewhere to go, and have a job, you can able to make a decision, a formal decision. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening. Have a nice night.
All right. So thank you to both those individuals who by all accounts are success stories. I understand that with the conviction, there are certain expectations to make sure that you can return in the proper way, and these individuals have done so, and have highlighted the continuous issues that they experienced after having served their time and continued to do certain actions thereafter. Safe to under, it's important to understand that there's currently a sealing process that's available to individuals with convictions. However, it is implemented by less than 1% of individuals with convictions, which causes you a pause and then asks, what is the effectiveness of said legislation if it is in itself a barrier to these individuals returning to society? So I see the automatic sealing process as a way to, again, remove some of those barriers, being intentional with our language. There are multiple quotes, one of which I wanted to read verbatim. It says, "All too often, the consequences of criminal record last for life, which can mean decades of diminished job opportunities." So I had a very thoughtful conversation with one of our civic leaders in the city, and we talked about how we have this ARPA funding, which is very limited in nature. If you understand this is a one-time use, I'm not going to steal this platform. But it's, this is an intentional opportunity to remove these consequences or frustrations or difficult natures for these individuals to provide continuous economic gains for our community. We're building and growing within. So I'm excited to hear from the other councilmembers. And this is a bill that's received countless support from all different individuals, partially business leaders. And one of the more prominent individuals to join this conversation is JP Morgan. Out of the conversations that I've had throughout the city, I've heard nothing but positive feedback. And if we were to proceed, I look forward to identifying those organizations at a later date.
Any thoughts after the conversation on this?
I did, I don't think this is part of this, but I did want to point out that the New York State Business Council also supports this, supports Clean Slate, and for the same reason, because employers are having problems finding employees. And so from a business perspective, from an economic perspective, it makes sense. So it's not just, I know sometimes people look at this type of legislation and think it's only like perhaps grassroots organizations or people who are impacted by it. But not necessarily. It's based on what it can do and how it can impact people economically and their lives going forward. And so that there isn't that recidivism rate, which has been spoken to. There are other organizations that recognize all of that, and say, "Okay, then, you know, we're willing to take this." And so the New York State Business Council is one of those organizations. And as we're considering it, I invite, I think that all councilmembers, when you have the opportunity to, where it says "Learn More" at the bottom of the handout that was provided to all of you, that you take the time to do that and to look at it. And for us to consider, you know, how we can also support this because it doesn't just impact communities around us. It also impacts our community because anyone who's released from incarceration is returned to the community from which they were incarcerated. So that means if they were incarcerated from Schenectady, that's where they release them to. So just wanted to say that I think it makes sense, and it's, you know, about economic justice. And, you know, we talked about housing and how people can't afford housing. So this impacts a number of things.
Yeah, I guess I would just add that I share the same kind of sentiments as Trent, you know, that I think it's a no-brainer. I think that the, as it's written, there are certain considerations and protective factors that one, you know, might jump out to anyone and say like, you know, what about, you know, someone who was convicted, you know, of a sexual crime against a child or something like that. I think that, that, you know, those type of things are glaring things that, you know, as a concerned community member might pop into your head, you know. You know, what are the protective factors for someone in those circumstances? And it's plainly written that someone in that, in said circumstance wouldn't be eligible for this. I just, you know, it's kind of sad that, you know, we are, we're in a society that we have to, you know, convince people of the humanity of others and providing them access and opportunity, not to a handout, not even necessarily a hand up. It's really allowing them to put their hand in and contribute to society. And I think that, you know, it's not lost on me that as so much work has went into this, and I appreciate the, you guys sharing, you know, your personal stories. And I would definitely consider you guys exceptional people, but we can't govern for the exception, right? You know, we have to make sure that we're governing that in ways that give everyone an opportunity. And someone shouldn't have to be as dynamic and as brilliant as maybe the gentleman that we have here before us. It could be just a regular old Joe like myself, but have an opportunity to contribute to society. And I know that that, not only does that increase protective factors, but obviously, there's an economic argument that is pretty clear in a diminishing job market faced with inflation and so on. So there's so many other reasons that we should just support this. But if for nothing else, that it just makes pretty plain common sense to do so. So I, but I'm almost troubled by the fact that we're just getting here to support something like that. That's probably my biggest issue with it. So it's an absolute no-brainer for myself. I welcome any other comments or questions on this.
I'll sit down. Yes, I'm so sorry. Just didn't repeat. So three years and seven years. What happens in the three years? You're still billed as...
I'm sorry?
You're still billed as, you know, just getting out of prison. You're still billed as a number. Employers, people who you rented an apartment from, they all still can have that information. Is that correct?
Until you've...
Yeah.
Until you've completed that timeframe, yes?
Right, right. To me, it doesn't make a lot of sense, you know, for them getting out. They want to get out and get moving. So I'm wondering where the three years and the seven years come from. You know what I'm trying to say?
I agree.
So just to play, it's three years from sentencing, not from release? Three years from sentencing?
Not including...
Not including the time spent in jail, right?
Excluding any time, excluding any time, it's material. Excluding any time incarcerated.
I'll just share that it would trigger after a person is finished on probation or parole. So after time served, off of any probation or parole, then three years is active. If you have a misdemeanor, seven years, and then it's active beyond the time.
So we're looking at someone can return to the community, have some post-supervision, parole, or something like that for maybe a couple of years. And then the clock starts once they successfully completed that, which is, again, I think maybe if I understand what you're saying to your...
What are they doing in the meantime? What are they doing in the meantime?
They're still with three or seven years.
Yeah, yeah.
So when the records are sealed. I think that's just the clarifying point, right?
That's what you want? So, you know...
There's still a felony misdemeanor, but they still have that tag with them?
Yeah, yeah. And that's after completing post-supervision, whatever that is. So it's extremely unfortunate that. Again, I think that this is something that we're not even scratching the surface as to where we need to be, but we are here.
So are you, are you saying what happens in the meantime while they're...
No, no, I'm just stating the fact that, you know, after three or seven years, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, me as a, as an employer, as a landlord or something, you know, I would want to know who I was renting to, who I was employing. And within that three to seven years, if you come, then I'm obviously the no.
Okay.
Oh, I think I missed, I think I, maybe I missed. So you're saying like, you support this, or are you saying...
I'm just saying, three to seven years. I mean, you're already, you're out. Let's hope you're not waiting three years to look for a job or an apartment, but you're already in the community.
Yeah, I think what this is getting at is that when you get out, you got to, you know, provide for yourself and for your family. So in order to be a productive member of society, you likely go on a job search. And in that three years or that seven years, after completing your sentence and whatever post-supervision you have, you're still less competitive than someone, than others, even after kind of serving your time.
The quality of the appointment that we're able to get isn't the same quality as somebody else, basically. It's like we're just surviving, we're scratching, instead of having an opportunity that somebody else has that doesn't have the same situation.
Of course.
It comes back to FaceTime, because when you're just looking at this piece of paper, even when you see my name, Carvel, it's not John.
I think that, you know, that highlights, you know, that we know that when we look at our incarcerated people in our society right now, we are, black and brown people are disproportionately impacted. And there's been a lot of work around, you know, some reform and things like that. So I think like, as we know that that's the direction that we're heading, and that, you know, we have to not be afraid to talk about the fact that this disproportionately impacts already marginalized communities and creates conditions in which people are far more likely to have less opportunities, meaning that they have less opportunities to support themselves or family, increasing the likelihood of someone choosing a different path. So if we want, if we want people to stay home and to be productive members of society, we want to be after they've already paid their debts to society. We want to be doing everything in our power to increase access for them to have a job and a safe place to live. And I just can't believe we're still trying to figure that out. Anyone else got something about that?
Johnson?
With regards to the bill delayed in the Assembly, do you know the reason why the bill has been delayed or put on hold?
I can't talk to that. I know it was currently sitting in a committee as of May of this year. Hopefully, with the new cycle as of January, and looking to get more support from municipalities, highlighting this as an issue that they would like to see progress forward. This is part of the reason why cities throughout New York State have been joining into this, not going to say fight, into this discussion about how this is economically feasible, and also taking demands where...
feasible, and it also taking Demani's word, or Mr. Harley's words for himself. It is something that's been heard already, so as Ms. Vitale highlighted, yes, three years and seven years respectively is a long time, but comparatively speaking, there is nothing currently available right now, so it's better than the alternative.
I think you probably know that there's not a lot of, you know, this isn't something that is like partisan, you get a lot of bipartisan support around this for different reasons, and there's, you know, lots of organizations and agencies that are traditionally pretty conservative and have really been vocal supporters of this, because it makes sense, you know, there's economics sense here too. And I, again, I hope that we don't have to appeal to the economics in order for people to see the value in this, because we're talking about human lives, but if we need to go to that level, it's there, because it's pretty sound, so. Any other thought?
So, Mr. Williams, you're just looking for a support resolution towards the Assembly and the Senate, two resolutions, or will be dispatched to both chambers?
I would say, I'd probably recommend a statement of support to where it's currently still made at, so I'd say to the Assembly, but wanted to bring it back in two weeks for a discussion, but at this point, I just wanted to kind of broach the topic, see if there are any opinions or comments or concerns, trying to do other council members a cursee, and then bring it back to us.
President Portillo?
And so there was also, and I'll share this article with everyone, there's a, there was a panel, and they're talking about how Clean Slate Act will address the workforce. So as Mr. Williams has said, for us to just take a look at the information that's provided for us, visit this website, formulate any other questions we have, and also to, I would forward this, and also about the New York State Business Council, just so we have all the information and make an informed decision as, as, in terms of whether we think it prudent to support this particular piece of legislation, so. So I'll forward that and then the other information that I have, so that you have all the information.
Today, we talked about the power of language and how language matters, and I guess I have another issue with this, besides the fact that we have to convince people. It's also like kind of the language, I think Clean Slate doesn't really capture it, because it's almost as if we're wiping away, you know, someone's deed, but that's not what we're doing here. They've already, they, right, it's, it's, maybe we should have had Neil talk to them about coming up with a better...
New Slate.
Right, right. There's some billboards around that, but really, Clean Slate is kind of suggestive of something that this doesn't represent, this is, this is after someone has already paid their debts to society in full, and then there's some time after that, you know? So again, this isn't wiping anyone's slate clean, if anything, it's just really, it's a community benefit that we can get a more qualified, robust workforce going, so. Okay, so we'll look to bring it back in a couple of weeks to talk, discuss it further after the council has had more time to research it. Like the table of adjournments.
Second.
That's it?
That's it? Huh? We don't have, we don't want to, when the last committee's done, we're out.
Okay.
We adjourned council meetings.
I want to be vacation.
Huh? Oh, you just adjourned the council meeting.